Good.
Oh, good.
Everyone good? Yeah. I'd like to welcome everyone to the October first, twenty twenty five, Cotwood Heights City Planning Commission. This is the work session. The first item on the agenda is to review what we'll be talking about at the business session. That includes the planning commission chair and vice chair elections. Project ZTA zoning text two zoning text amendments and then the consent agenda. And without further ado, we'll move to the general plan update. And can I just say one quick thing before we dive into it? Is I really appreciate the fact how we can make comments. Super easy to do. And it's great to see what I mean, when I looked at it yesterday, I saw that Suzanne Highland had made some and there were a couple. I'm sorry. I don't remember everyone who's made comments, but it's really helpful. And then, and it's again, I just want to say how easy it is to make the comments. So make sure you do it and make sure you don't wait till the last minute on the twentieth or even the twenty first. To start looking at it because it does take some time and it deserves it deserves our time in really giving it its due diligence. So.
It's about a hundred and twenty pages or so that way. I mean, it's not tight.
No, it's easy to read, but you do want.
But it's more than ten pages.
Yeah, it is. It's a hundred and twenty pages. There's a lot of pictures though, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll run through it. Let me.
Okay, anyway, I just wanted to say that before we.
Yeah. Well, thanks. Let me log into Zoom so I can share my screen with folks online.
Should be the one in here.
So let me. Do that real quick. So as I do this, I'll try to. Multitask. So it's important that we understand just the context of the general plan, why we have one and the role that it plays in. What you all do as planning commissioners, as well as council and staff, because it's. It's a document that we rely on quite a bit. Yes. Here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jim.
Yeah.
There's a couple of people that I'm not sure I know that are sitting around the table.
Sorry.
So I should have. I should have done that before we go in. My apology.
Yeah, sorry. And I just realized I'm new and I don't really know anyone. So I forget that you guys know who's the one that I don't. So. So Sheldon is a new planner that we hired. His first day was Monday. So do you want to introduce yourself and just let the commissioners know?
And we'll introduce ourselves.
Yeah, I'm Sheldon Howa. I was previously working for Hermann City. I was there for six years and decided to move over to Cotwood and I saw the opportunity.
Awesome.
Little change in process and development.
That's awesome.
Yeah, Sheldon's awesome. We're really lucky to have him. He's got a lot of experience and will bring a lot of insights to help us propel the city forward. So yeah, we're excited that Sheldon's here. And then Maverick, you know.
Yeah.
Emma.
Yeah, I'm Emma Glendy in the night. I started here a few months ago. I just graduated my masters in city planning and I'm a planner one here.
Great.
Awesome.
Yeah, so she's been trapped at the front counter, but I'm going to make her do some of these meetings and present. So she's awesome. She's a rock star. We're super lucky to have Emma.
That's awesome. Welcome. And let us do. We'll do just round the table, quick introduction. So you know who who we are. Lucy Anderson.
Sean Steinman.
Michael Smith.
Rusty Lugo.
Dan Mills.
Do we have anyone? There's no one online, right? No commissioner. Okay.
Lucy, do we have the sign in sheet? Did that need to go?
I haven't seen.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, you guys want.
All right, sorry. So sorry for.
No, that's okay. So, yeah, and I apologize for not wanting to see everybody because I know there's some new faces. So.
It's my job.
All right. So the general plan is just like it says here, you know, Cottonwood Heights tomorrow. It's a forward looking document that will establish the city's vision for the next ten to twenty years. And that the general plan is really the staff's marching orders for how we move forward and what types of things we prioritize. Which initiatives that we undergo, you know, it also informs like code amendments, things like that. So it's really the overarching policy vision for the city. And there are several chapters. Let me just go to that. So there's eight chapters in this plan. A few of those are mandated by the state that we have to have. But some of our optional like economic development, we think is very important. So there's a chapter about that sustainability, parks and recreation. Those are ones we just think are important that we should include in here. So as. As we review the document, I guess I can provide a little bit of background and history. We talked a little bit last time about the general plan and how we got to where we are today. The memo that we provided in your packets will provide the background and overview of kind of how we got here. This project initially kicked off in twenty twenty, I believe, or late twenty nineteen, so a while ago. And. It had. Gone through a public process in twenty twenty one that seemed pretty involved where they had public outreach through open house meetings, online outreach. This was kind of right. Right in the midst of COVID. So it was a little tricky to do outreach for that, but there was feedback that we received and the consultants landmark design. And a few other consultants put together a draft. That draft was presented to the staff in twenty twenty two, I believe. At that time, there were some things in the plan that the council at that time. Were super supportive of, not that there were big things, but they just said, hey, let's, let's take another look at this and, you know, come up with the new version of the draft. So it went back, staff and the consultants worked together. And mind you, I wasn't here during any of this. So this is all just what the consultants have informed me about. And then earlier this year, the administration made the general plan a priority to try to get it across the finish line. Because there's a lot of stuff in here that's really important that we would like to have adopted. So in August of this year, the consultants delivered a revised draft reflecting all the feedback and comments they had received up until last year from the council commission. The challenging part is that since this project began, we have a new mayor, a new city council, and many of you are new. So the people that began this effort and informed a lot of the drafting are no longer with the city. So now we're kind of at a point where we as staff and the city need to reevaluate the plan and make sure that everything that's in here. Captures the vision of the current administration, current council, the current finding commission. We are relatively. Comfortable with the fact that a lot of the ideas and concepts were supported by the community as a whole. I don't know if the community has seen as much transition in the last few years as the staff and the commissioners here. But really, as we review this, we just want to look at it through that lens of does this vision capture what the city wants to become over the next ten years? And are the ideas, the goal, the. Objectives. You know, adequate for what we, how we get to that that vision. So as you review the draft, well, I think tonight we'll focus on the first four chapters. And in the memo, I included some questions to help guide the conversation. So chapter one is the overview and introduction. So again, does this draft plan capture the vision values and big ideas from the outreach efforts? From earlier, does the plan as a whole establish course for achieving the city's long term goals and growth? And development. So I guess with that, who's had an opportunity to to go through the PDF that's available online? Awesome. So I have been going through it and adding quite a few comments. I think it's great that we can all see. What each other are thinking because there's a lot of stuff in here that I said, yes, I agree. Let's go this direction. So.
Let me ask you a quick question.
Yes.
Who is this directed toward this document? Is it for internal staff or is this a public document?
So all of the above. The general plan, you can kind of think of it as like a business plan for a company. So you've got, you know, Apple or whatever company, they say, okay, in the next ten years, this is where we want to see our company go. So they draft the business plan that's really the marching orders for the staff and the executive decision makers. But since we're a city, it's also the community's plan because it's their community, right? So that the general public generally has a big say in how. The city guides is directed in the future and largely that's through who you vote for, right? As a city council person or a mayor, that in turn will help establish where the city ends up. So the the document really is intended for the community, but mostly probably the staff will use it the most. Because we, we review this document anytime a proposal comes in for an application for a rezone or a site plan or a subdivision. We look at the general plan and say, is this consistent with what the vision is already said it needs to be? And if it's not, then we take steps to, you know, dig a little deeper and say, well, what's, what's the difference?
But my observation, I've not spent as much time on this as I intend to, but. It felt a little bit jargony to me. I'm still getting accustomed to the language of the planning commission and zoning language and stuff.
Yeah.
And if it's written more for a general readership, I think it's nice to be aware of anything that sounds jargony and maybe.
Yeah.
Or explanation.
And I think when you review it, you'll want to add that as a comment if you find something that's not. There, there's a lot of my comments even are like, what does so and so, what does this mean? I mean, what does this phrase mean?
Yeah, almost like a footnote.
Yeah, I mean, and you'll see that here, you can see where people have made. Made comments. And so I think as you're reading it, if there's something that sounds jargony, even if you understand it, but you think it might not make sense for someone who's never been involved. But write it as a question because definitely want this to be a really clear and transparent document.
I. Yeah, I have another question. The general plan, you'd mentioned like it's updated every ten, twenty years. What dictates, what's the methodology for a general plan to be updated?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the the general plan is a living document. So it can be updated, you know, periodically, you know, yearly or, you know, if there's a specific request to make a specific update. That's often entertained. I think for for Cotwood Heights, the original general plan was adopted in two thousand five or six, right after incorporation. In reviewing that that plan, most everything the city wanted to achieve has already been achieved. So this is really a refresh and an update to say, okay, based on today's market, the dynamics of today, the the. Technology we have available, the resources the city has, how do we want to guide the next ten to twenty years? For the future. So it's, it's intended to be a more long term vision, but it also has short term goals that we can achieve. And there's no real rhyme or reason as to how often it's updated, but generally ten to twenty years is a pretty typical timeframe for when, when there's a comprehensive update.
And the the old plan from two thousand five, two thousand six, is it on the website? Did I?
It is. Okay. Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah, it's on there.
Great.
And as you can imagine, you know, twenty years ago, the world was a very different place and, you know. Desire shift and market shift, reality shifts. So it's, it's really just making course adjustments to say. You know, this is where we said we wanted to be. How are we doing? And where do we want to go from here?
Got another question. What kind of, I guess, legislative teeth are we able to implement within the general plan with kind of executing either zoning changes? Consistent with maps that are built with that? Is there any way that we can have kickers to it based on, all right, we need to have this area equate to X, Y, Z zoning upon this time period? Just because I know a lot of this is ambitious. So is there anything we can do on a legislative standpoint to push the council to say, you know, we do want to have by, you know. Twenty twenty seven, this area reevaluated for maybe an RDA or a CRA or something like that. Because what I don't like to see with the general plan is it's generic and there's not any teeth. So that it just gets dust on it. And when you refer back to it, it's, well, this is, this is our ambition to it. But it requires somebody that has the time and energy to go in and get that area rezoned or redeveloped. So what can we do in that regards within the general plan to have some of those kickers down the road?
Yeah, that's a really great question. And. I think the. The answer is that the general plan itself is the policy guide, more or less. It's not necessarily law or regulation, but it provides staff with the teeth to go to the council and say, hey. You adopted this policy to have this RDA area established by this date. You know, staff takes that seriously. So for the last couple of years, we've been doing that in our time. And now we're bringing it back to you for formal adoption or to amend the code. And the general plan is what we would refer back to to say, you've already told us you want us to do this. We did it. Now we're asking you to adopt it rather than making up something that we want and then taking it to the council and they say, well, we never asked for this. So it's really just the policy direction so that staff can go and implement what the plan says. And then it's really tough for the council to say like, no, we don't support that. And it's like, well, you do because you adopted it in our general plan and you said you wanted it. Happen, you know.
And I think that that's what's so important about a general plan is that adoption period. If we get a new council in four years and they refer back to this and we didn't execute on some of those implementation details within the general plan. Then it's, they're going to then look at, all right, what can we do to adopt and change the general plan at that time? So I think that.
Sure.
That's one of the concerns, especially if it's more of a zoning or RDA or CRA. So we can at least put efforts into place that if we have ambition for a CRA or an RDA.
Right.
Or a zone change, you know, form based code is a great example. What do we do to implement that in the same adoption of the general plan so that we can start executing on that? We don't have the potential of council down the road to be able to just say, oh, let's nix that out of the general plan because there's not enough teeth to.
Yeah.
Plan. And that that'd be my biggest concern behind this because, you know, I did side by side analysis between the twenty twenty five draft and the two thousand five draft. And, you know, a lot of it has been implemented. There's also things that have changed. We had a recession. We had a pandemic.
Right.
You know, we had, we had a lot that ended up in place. So I would love to see a lot of what's in the general plan to be in parallel before full adoption. Implemented from a zoning component or even from an RDA or CRA component.
Yeah, that's a little trickier to do just because the the general plan is intended to be more general, you know, more broad to where it may identify some very specific. Things that the city can do, but it's really establishing, you know, a vision to say, we would love the city. You know, to to focus more on walkable type of urbanism where people have options for transit or. You know, Fort Union Boulevard, for example, we'd like that to be a place where buildings have a better presence on the street, that architectural features are more valued. And then our job as a staff would say, okay, this is the goal. What's the best mechanism to achieve that? Is it a form based code? Is it some other mechanism? And then we, we do the work to figure out how we can implement that goal and then bring it back to the council. So there is a little bit of lag time between adoption of the code because that's really the. The vision and goal. And then the staff goes back to try to figure out how to implement it and then the council then adopted. So I don't know if there's a right or wrong way to do it. And there's always that risk that in five or ten years, you know, the future leadership may sway away from what this policy document is. Which is completely up to them, but it's also a document that's driven by the public. So if the public has said they want these things. Probably not going to change a whole lot unless there's some significant events that would sway their their views. So. Yeah, I don't know the best way to strike a balance between the two. Yeah.
Um, so just that idea of enforcement, I mean, traditionally, at least in the last five or six years, the general plan has been. Not necessarily with an enforcement's idea, Sean, but it definitely lays the foundation so the developers aren't playing, guess what we're thinking as a city? And it definitely has guided when they are asking for rezones in right places. And it also, on the other hand, if we, if there are people that don't like it, it becomes a reference document. So it's not, it's not code per se, but it definitely, it has a little bit of teeth to it, like maybe some baby teeth to it a little bit. And even on appeal, like that, that has been referenced that this is in, if this is in your general plan and you're going to pass something as a planning commission that's in opposition to your general plan. That incongruity does not operate in our favor. So trying to do it, just even having the words out there. And it will be a little jargony out of necessity and some of it is just speaking the language of planning, which I know. I, I have that same sensitivity to that. It's like, okay, these words may mean different things, but for the, in the context. To my understanding, after a couple of years of doing this, is that there's sometimes a some need to make sure that the the audiences that have the maybe the greatest. Implications for what they're doing based on this plan, we need to make sure we're speaking to those. And I, I have some implicit trust in our planning staff that as we get things from, from a consultant, that you guys are going to look at this through the filter of Cotwood Heights. And that's going to require you four to make sure that you are up to speed on the history of the city and how things have gone a little bit. Going through the appeals, you can, we've not had that many. Going through the appeals, you can, we've not had that many appeals in the city and um, and the ability for you to see uh, why was something appealed and how was it deliberated upon at the planning commission level that led it to that point and then what was the outcome? Um, those have all been hard lessons, um, and they, and they take your time and they take our time and they take developers' time. So decreasing the chances that we're gonna be crosswise with the public at large. Uh, with an engaged citizenry, we're never gonna please all the people with this plan. And that's partially been the, the sticky wicket for the last seven years is that um, we have a very, very engaged citizenry here. And in every, almost every sentence, if we do some of the, the public square, there will be somebody that disagrees with every sentence at some degree or another. So I, I you know, we start talking about form-based code, for example, or when we pick up other pieces of this that um, may be perceived by some as a political issue or an agenda-based issue, I think it's important that we strive for clarity in language. And if it's jargony because it helps planning staff communicate with developers, I can live with that. But if it's jargony because there's some version of AI cut and paste and I don't, I don't think that's the case with our consultant in this case. But I, my expectation is that you guys are gonna clean that stuff up and even if I, I still wanna consider this first draft coming from staff that you guys feel comfortable even with us, that you're redlining things as well and that this is not like, we need to defend the document as it sits right now. That provides me a little bit more comfort. Cause I, I do, I, I have maybe the opposite fear of Sean. I feel like this document, once it's out there and once it's been passed by the planning commission and the city council, that now gives developers license to do exactly what that document says.
Yeah, that's not exactly true. I think the, and just to be clear, that the planning commission would be an advisory panel to the, to the city council. So all the stuff in the, the general plan or the zoning code would be up to the council to adopt. Um, and really, the way the law's been structured in the case law from the past is the council has the discretion to approve or disapprove any zoning requests or any general plan thing. They don't really have to have a reason. They could just say like, we don't like it. And we say no. And the, the appeal for that is really challenging because it's discretionary legislative action. Um, at the same time, the city, the council could rezone the whole city for no reason to something else, you know? I wouldn't say that's a popular thing to do, but it's been done before in other places where the, the city will do a comprehensive citywide rezone effort. And they can do that because it's in their purview. So um, so relative to the general plan and the zoning and the text, you know, you all wouldn't be at risk of making decisions that are contrary to that because everything you review would be an administrative matter. That would be, does it meet what the code says that the council has adopted? Yes or no? Um, the appeals come into play when there's a difference of interpretation of what the law actually says. Uh, or they disagree with the process or they feel that the city didn't follow through on a process they, they had already adopted. Uh, so it's all very black and white with what you all generally review.
So the, the references or appeals authority is made to the general plan, we're not factual, is that what you're saying?
Uh, for a rezone?
Uh, any number of decisions, they're referencing that as a, as a matter of fact.
If it's a rezone, then it's completely discretionary.
Cause I, that, that, I mean, maybe uh, maybe I misunderstand what our appeals authority said. So that's good to know. That's not been the experience so far.
Yeah, I wanna jump in on that just a little bit because general plans, I mean, if you look at different cities, whether it's Harriman or Murray or Mill Creek, there's kind of a, a trend within general plans. And the general plans that I have seen that are effective are those that have timelines. So for example, in our general plan proposal, it references, you know, the transportation master plan or moderate income housing plans and strategies. So those are the teeth that I would say are put into place where the transit, the transportation master plan is going to have, you know, by twenty thirty-five, we now have X amount of money to spend on Fort Union. And that is something that is now going to be reflected by the administration, that's going to be reflected by the planners to then say, this is our goal and this is what we need to now account for from a budgetary standpoint to make that happen. Now, in certain cases, like in the economic development, or even in some of the housing affordability components or land use, we don't have as much of that where we're not saying, all right, by twenty thirty-five, we need to at least present this to the council to say, this is what our general plan was and here's the direction that we need to be going and we need to at least put this on our agenda to better understand where's our budget with it. Do we have budget or can we start applying for grants? What should we be doing so that we can actually start guiding the agenda? So it's not just being reactionary to what's coming in front of the council, but more so saying, here's what we put into place in twenty twenty-five, here's where we're going. And we need to etch away at it every single year and every city, every single council. And if the council says, well, this is completely combating with what I ran for and my constituents' requests and needs, then they can then make a modification to the general plan, then say, all right, let's take this off the agenda. This is not a priority. We just had a major event that happened within the world or country to then kind of debunk us on this. That's more so, and that's why, I mean, I love the transportation component of this because it refers to our transportation master plan. But we actually have those teeth. Then say, all right, this is kind of our use indicator for X Y Z roads. And here's what we need to prioritize to then either make, you know, traffic calming or bike lanes or whatever it is. So that's more so kind of my thought process on this general plan because our original general plan was, all right, here's our vision as a brand new city. Right, let's do it. Let's check all those boxes. So everybody in the original city was checking those boxes every single day.
Yeah.
Now, I think there's a lot of reactionary components of what I would be worried about because we're in an infill development city. So
Yeah.
how do we now start identifying areas that we can start redeveloping and promoting for uh, you know, the city between the canyons and what that actually equates to from a tourism standpoint, from an economic development standpoint, from you know, a land use component as well.
Yeah, so I, I love the idea of having, you know, specific targets or uh, criteria that we can base the goals on. So there's, there's some type of a measurable element that we can, you know, two, three, five years, go back and evaluate the plan and say, how are we doing? And what do we need to prioritize? And that's, that's really what the general plan is intended to do, is provide us with direction. Is to say, you know, the council said in twenty years, we wanna be here. How do we reverse engineer that and start today with implementing to get to that vision? And there's, there's a lot of things to weigh there, right? Budget is one, staff resources is one. Um, the market, you know, things that the city can control versus what the private sector controls with development, financing. Um, so I think the, the goal of this plan is to say, you know, from a broader view, what does Cottonwood Heights want to be in twenty years? What does it look like? Who lives here? What type of economic opportunities are there? What's the transportation infrastructure like? What's the recreation infrastructure like? Um, and if we can articulate that vision through this document, we as a staff and a commission and a council can then take steps to implement that vision. Um, and, and that's really what this guide is intended to do, is to have specific goals and actionable items that, that we can evaluate. And I think it would be great if every six months, you know, we could review this document as a whole and say, which things are we working on? What are the priorities? And how are we doing um, to get there? Cause I, I don't want this to just sit on the shelf, cause that doesn't do anyone any good and it doesn't produce results.
Yeah.
If no one's referencing that, so.
Is, is there a way that we could put a critical path? And you know, like maybe a five-year critical path, ten-year critical path for each section of the general plan? To basically say, here's, here's kind of the indicators that we now need to observe. Um, and just really get more granular on, all right, in five years, here are the things that we feel need to be at least evaluated and worked on as a city, as planners, as council, to be able to reflect back and then actually create a, a solid indicator that, all right, the amount of money that we invested in this third party to come and do this analysis was worth it. We wanna continue reevaluating on all of this and we're doing what the citizens actually wanted. So then we can point back to it and say, here's what we actually were able to do. And I think a perfect example of this is our original general plan from two thousand five showed a lot of what Hillside Plaza was vision to be. That was kind of what the goal was and we're looking to be executing right now. So I would love to look at some type of a critical path opportunity for this uh, on every level and every category within the general plan.
Mm-hmm. Good idea. Yeah, that's great. And I, yeah, I'll make a note of that just so we can not lose that idea. So, so with that, um, like I said, I'd like to focus on the first four chapters and I, I've been going through and making comments. Um, and I encourage you all to do the same. So just like many of you, I, I think there were a lot of sections that I, I thought were really wordy or that could be rephrased. Um, you know, like this one, for example, oops. I forgot where that went. Oh, here. So this, this one um, seems worthy. Consider replacing it with this type of language. So I mean, go through and, and make whatever comments you think are, are helpful. Um, I also had a lot of things that I just said, like, I don't know what this means. Um, so an example of that is here. Um, so distinguished Cottonwood Heights is forward-thinking community as a state-of-the-art with a state-of-the-art transportation system. I don't know what that means. That doesn't really give me direction to say, how are we gonna change our transportation system? It's like, well, I don't know, monorail, that would be state-of-the-art, you know? So, you know, clarifications like this, cause if, if we don't know what it means, then we don't know how to implement it. Um, so you know, I encourage you to go through and make those comments. Um, and I've made a lot of them. So here's another one. Leverage locational and structural advantages of the city. I don't know what structural means. Is that like infrastructure, the buildings? The physical geography of the city. Um, so you know, as, as we go through, you know, take note of that, cause again, it's important to view this as you know, what's, is, is the vision clearly articulated and do we know what it means so that we can implement it? Um.
So Jim, are you the one actually entering the text during the writing, the comments and the periods and?
No, so the, the consultants delivered this draft. Um.
Do you mean the comments over on the side?
No, no, I can see the comments on the side. I just, the final product is.
Yeah, the actual draft was produced by the consulting team. Uh, so I wasn't involved.
But they'll get all this feedback, all of our comments.
Yeah, so this document, this online viewer they set up, so um, the intent is, we're gonna review it here. And then the council's gonna review it next week in their meeting. And then on the twenty-first of October, we'll all review it together in a joint work session. And then after that meeting, the consultants will take this with everyone's comments and produce a new updated version of the draft. Um, so that's the target date that we're hoping to get all the comments back um, from staff, planning commission. The Parks, Trails and Open Space Committees also has this. Um, and then the council. So a lot of people have have access here and we, we wanna keep it so that, you know, the public isn't going in here and making edits, cause that could get really confusing and it could be a, a lot of conflicting comments and ideas. Uh, so really the idea is to get everyone at the city on the same page. And then at the beginning of November, have a similar forum for the public to weigh in, um, to get their feedback. So so maybe let's just start with the, the goals in chapter one. The intro. So these are more of the, the community-wide goals. Uh, did anyone have any comments or questions on there, are there specific things you'd like to talk about?
I, I do have a, a thought about, um, I commented on the affordability word that came up a couple of times, which I don't have any argument with affordability. But I, I think it'd be nice to have it clarified that some of that is not at the option of Cottonwood Heights. Some of that is managed by state law.
Yeah.
And just to clarify what really is required by the state versus what is our requirement here.
Makes reference to the modern income housing plan. So I think that there's three different areas that we have to identify within the modern income housing plan. Correct me if I'm wrong on this, Jim. But I think three different markers that we have to state are what the city's pushed forward is. So I believe that that's in here, is that correct?
Yeah, so the, the modern income housing plan is a chapter of the general plan. Uh, and that's one of the mandated sections that we have to have for state law. Uh, but I think there are references to affordable here and I, I made the same comments, so, and Suzanne Highland had a comment here. So this was one of the golden principles, to ensure community and lifestyle choice. Ensure that Cottonwood Heights residents have access to housing that is safe, accessible, affordable, attractive and well-connected to services. Um, you know, that's something that we can't really control as a city as to how affordable something is. I think you can reword that. And I've made some recommendations here to say that we have a variety of housing types that are offered at different price points, right? Um, and that's, that's, I think, what the intent of that goal is. You know, when you start using affordable or workforce housing or, or terms like that, there's a lot of baggage associated with that. And there's different definitions for what does a portable mean? Is it like subsidized HUD housing? Does it just mean someone can afford it? Um, so I think be clarifying language like this as during your review is also really helpful, cause it, again, do we know what that means enough to implement it um, with policies and other uh, code amendments?
Um, I might add, Jim, uh, accessible, just you guys, through your ADA lens, I'm a physical therapist, so if we're gonna use the word accessible, let's, I, I don't know if you put asterisks or you, you know, you have some reference to a document at the bottom in the end notes or something like that. Those, those, you know, again, uh, accessible means lots of things. It's like, well, is it, is it easy to drive in and out of the neighborhood because of the traffic going back and forth? Or is it somebody in a wheelchair can get in and out? So just making that more clear. I don't wanna not put my finger on the scale, but um, just another one of those words. And I don't want you to have to put parenthetically what it means and try to find like the ultimate six-word definition, but it just, adding that to the end notes, I'm sure the consultant can probably come up with some stuff or you guys have some stuff from all four of your varied experiences.
Yeah, so tho- those are important things as well, cause there's, again, we don't want this document to be used against the city either to where someone comes in and and says, well, it says right here that you want affordable housing and my understanding of that is this. Um, so it, it is important to be clear in what these, these statements are. Um.
Maybe it's instead of that it is, that aspires towards or something like that. So because is is really defining and may, it may tie, it may be handcuffs for us and you guys and the council. So again, I don't wanna get too deep into the wordsmithing here, but if we're gonna
Yeah.
you know, make sure that other audiences understand this.
Sure.
But would it help, Dan, if you just wrote a comment on the side?
I will, I will. I was looking forward to this because I, I, I have a boatload of comments, but I didn't wanna just put a barrage there. It's kind of.
Put them in there. I'm, I'm.
Okay, I will, I will. I didn't wanna be like the one that's just going crazy and everybody feeling like crazy Dan's going
Oh, I've got a lot.
wild on the side here.
There's gonna be a lot of comments on the side.
And one, something that we're gonna do as a staff is before that joint work session, really the goal of that meeting is to bring everyone together, identify sections where there's conflicting ideas or people don't agree on something and to get consensus to say, you know, the planning commission agrees on this, the council agrees on this. Let's have an open discussion about where we're coming from and reach some consensus, cause we can't send all this stuff to the consultants and then they have four different ideas for conflicting goals and we're like, well, we don't know what to do. So, so that joint work session is really intended to, to flesh all that out so that we can.
Like somehow merge all the comments or you're gonna leave them like, you're gonna leave them as, as, as is, okay? The comments piece. I didn't know if you were gonna do something with, cause eventually we're gonna run out of room on the page.
Right. Oh, they'll figure out more room. I don't know, how that'll work.
Okay.
Um, so, so one that I had questions on was, you know, go forward, transform major corridors. I just said we need to talk more about this. Um, there's a lot of things that are listed here that are outside the city's control. You know, I get the intent. But I think achieving that is gonna be more the byproduct of implementing other elements of the plan and that that would be the result rather than the goal. Uh, so I don't, I don't know. I, I think I'd like to get your option or view on, on that. Let me zoom in here so you can see that.
So that, so on this one, um, I wrote down to come back and look at this one, cause I had a question on it too, but the just multimod, multimodal, what does, what does, what does that mean?
Yeah, so multimodal means different modes of transportation. So walking, biking, scooters, cars, buses.
And you think this is, this is talking about, I think about in Cottonwood Heights, Fort Union, the top of Fort Union, before you get to Wausatch on ski days, major, major, major problem. And it's always a concern and, and, and. And it's always a concern and 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 that's what I look, cause that is obviously a major corridor, um, and. A- and it's been, at at least that section is of of Cottonwood Heights and that specifically of Fort Union has always been a huge.
Yeah, and I and I agree, and I guess if that's really the intent, they should reword it to say that, to say. You know, consider alternative transportation. Things for Fort Union during the winter seasons so that we know what it means, right?
Right.
Um, cause here it's saying minimize local traffic congestion and parking demand. By developing a robust multimodal transportation system that transforms auto oriented corridors into multimodal streets. Okay. From a planner's perspective, I understand what that means.
Right, but.
But that's like. Like a hundred year goal, right? And then you need like funding from UDOT, from UTA, from. The feds, the city has to chip in on that. How do we prioritize where those things take place? What are the things we're trying to resolve with that? Um. So there's. That's a, that's maybe too broad of a goal.
So Jim, I I would say I'm just reading those bullets, those are the kind of controversial, uh. Like just, um, uh, ways people are moving through here, the way our chair just described a little bit. Wasatch Boulevard, which we have no real control over, we can recommend Highland Drive, which. Uh, UDOT's been pretty clear that aspirationally, they would love that to be. A backup superhighway on the east side going all the way down and accepting Sandy basically. Blocking them, that's what that would turn into. And then wanting to have more arterials to feed the canyons, including for Union Boulevard. It's a, it's a. Trying to be reasonable in, but still reactionary to those pressures. Want to get through our city, people that don't want to spend money here, people that don't live here and people aren't coming here to visit. Which from a priority standpoint for the council and typically from the commission and the residents is that. That is not a top priority for us, so to facilitate people being able to make it through our city reasonably.
Sure.
These were the reactions to that, all of which we have very little control over, but we shine a light on if. If the feds want to invest here, if UTA wants to invest here, if UDOT wants to invest here, this is what we would like it to look like and. Uh, I read that and I'm like, that's, it 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 seems vague and ethereal, but it is definitely something that. Universally, if you start describing those those three issues or those three streets that. People are pretty united, like. Those are like eighty, ninety percent approval kind of issues.
I I agree and I think. This could be restructured or rewarded to say. You know, that the city will support efforts or um encourage or. You know, something like that.
We can't own that goal, I mean.
Yeah, so we we can advocate for. You know, alleviating traffic during peak snow season to to that. So I guess that's where where I'm coming from is. I understand the intent, but we also need to understand the city's role.
Yeah.
In achieving that and really what the city's position is. So if UDOT approaches us and says. Hey, we'd love to install a light rail line along. Wasatch Boulevard. You know, if we have it in here, they're like, yeah, we actually said that we would support and advocate for something like that. Let's talk about it, um. Then that's a lot easier than for us. To go back and say, oh, we hadn't thought about that. Let's talk to the planning commission. Let's talk to the council. What's everyone think? Everyone has different ideas. The neighborhoods are freaking out. You know, if it's already in here, it's a lot easier for us to then move forward and know, um, that's like, okay, well, we've already talked about this and it's. Something that we'd like to work with. So so that's one example of one I I called out here.
Can we change the word uh from developing? Because your point, your point is well made, that I mean, we're not in a position to develop it. So maybe it's support or something else, finding another verb for that phrase.
Yeah, and I think, you know, advocate or support initiatives or things like that, cause it. The the city definitely does have a voice with the regional transportation network through Wasatch Front Regional Council. You know, UDOT does actually collaborate with us and ask our opinion on things. We don't know what we want, we can't really tell them what we want, um, so it is good to have that baseline. You know, if the world was our oyster, here's what we need. So that we can communicate that to other groups, um. So, let's see. It's moving through here. So there's, I'm, I think some work to be done on these. Just the wording, um, and the phrasing. I wanna spend the whole time on chapter one, um.
Things like words like maintain the city as a friendly. What I, that's a. Very subjective kind of word.
Yeah, Suzanne suggested some new new wording here, um, to say, you know, preserve the city's desirable mountain suburban lifestyle where people are proud to live, learn, work and recreate. I think that's great, cause that. You know, it gives us some type of an identity and culture that we can. You know, aspire to maintain. Um.
Do you believe that we could? Create definition around what our distinct sense of place is?
Yeah, I think that's probably what the land use chapter. Would capture or really all of the chapters, because Cottonwood Heights is unique, you know, we don't want to be a. Have a boilerplate general plan that's. You know, you could adopt in any city anywhere. So I I think that's the challenge is how do you define? What the city is so that we understand what it is so that we don't screw it up. If we don't know what it is. Then it's really difficult for us to say, you know, we don't want to sway from these values. It's like, well, what are the values that we really cherish? Uh, and the challenging part is. You know, balancing competing interests and say, yes, we understand that we want to preserve what we have. But we also need to recognize that there's development pressures, there's the reality of growth. And economic development generally brings with it some growth. Um, you know, the state is mandating cities to do things that we wouldn't necessarily agree to do otherwise, so. You know, i- if we have the underlying baseline of of what Cottonwood Heights is, then at least we have some. Reference point.
Yeah.
Uh, moving forward.
And perspective on that, two thousand and five general plan stated preserve. The suburban bedroom community character. That was kind of our definition of what the sense of place of Cottonwood Heights is. So at that time period, it was a bedroom community. That was the preservation. So I think finding what we are, are we? A. Tourism hub. Are we a suburban tourism hub, you know? How do we balance that out? We're not a veteran community. I think that's been pretty apparent. Um, you know, to Salt Lake. So I think defining that and allowing the city to define that, I think is gonna be key. Because I think we're positioned between two massive tourism canyons. And I think if we try to combat that we're not a tourism. Community. Then we're going to fall short to Holiday and Sandy.
Yeah.
You know, from an economic development standpoint, and we're going to lose out on tax dollars and. You know, turn into the same situation that happened in Hermon when they lost Mountain View Corridor or Mountain View Village, so.
Yeah.
You know, uh, I would hate to see something like that happen where we don't have that clear sense of place.
Sure.
And I think that the general plan should clearly identify that instead of saying. That token word says a place, that means something different to everybody. We were pretty clear that we were a veteran community in two thousand and five.
Right.
So.
Yeah, and and that's, that's a really great comment, and I think that's what this document as a whole is trying to capture is. What is Cottonwood Heights? You know, we're we're at a turning point where. You know, the city's not a brand new city anymore. It's it's relatively new, but we need to have some choices to make. Are we gonna take advantage of the recreation and the tourism opportunities that present themselves here? But we understand what the trade offs are at that, right? Um, you know, there's huge economic benefit to that. But it's gonna bring more people here, it's more cars and more housing and more jobs, which may mean more density. So I I think. The the really difficult part with any kind of a planning initiative is. Understanding the trade offs and clearly communicating that to the public to say, if you don't want any change. That's awesome. Go to the Rust Belt and see how that's worked out for those communities that don't have any economic development. They're exactly the same as they were fifty years ago, and I don't know if that's what you guys want. Um, on the flip side. There's communities that have changed a huge amount that maybe is also not what the community wants, um, so. It's striking a balance and and what do we really want? What are the goals? And then we as a staff can figure out. You know, weighing all those conflicting interests, what's the best path for the city to get to that place without bringing with it all the. All the baggage with with that decision, so. And and that's really what our job is to communicate to you and the council is. This is what we can do. And these are the different scenarios that could play out. What do you want to do based on that information, um? So a- as far as land use goes, there's the the land use map. I encourage you to to look at this, um, you know, as you can see. The community already is largely residential. I don't think. Anyone's interested in making drastic changes to any existing neighborhoods, um, you know, generally. The core of any community is having well established. Stable neighborhoods, um, which I think Cottonwood Heights has. What I view as the the opportunity areas, um. And this captures it in the plan are these activity centers, so these areas that are primarily commercial and multifamily nodes around major corridors. These are the areas where we'll see change in growth, um. You know, we're just at the phase of development cycles that. A lot of commercial shopping centers are becoming outdated and vacant and will eventually transform into something else. Now's our opportunity to say, well, what do we want those to become? Do we want them to become more mixed use nodes that are walkable? That have urban design qualities that are. You know, more akin to like a resort style community. Do we want to redevelop those into another strip shopping center that will bring retail dollars, um? So those are the questions that this plan will will ask, you know, the gravel pit area. Right now it's slated as a regional commercial center. Or regional center. I think that makes a lot of sense. It doesn't have huge impacts on existing neighborhoods. We can absorb a lot of density. In that area to accommodate the growth without impacting other, you know, established areas of the city. That's maybe an opportunity to capitalize on the tourism and, you know, increasing retail tax dollars, uh, property values. For the city generally so that we're fiscally healthy, um. So.
Whatever you guys see on that piece of property, just with new eyes, that, I mean, that's the largest piece of undeveloped. Commercial land on the east side of Salt Lake County. And we, we, it would be wonderful for that to be some version of an economic engine.
Yeah.
You know, and just with your previous experiences and even if it's recent educational experience to just be able to. Help us know how we can cultivate that. I I'm not one that just feels like it's all about the money, but. We don't have, we don't have a Costco, we don't have an IMC, we don't have a Utah Auto Mall, we don't have. You know, fill in the blank, whatever it is, um. And not something crass necessarily. I think it needs to be in keeping with kind of the the flavor of Cottonwood Heights, but man, I just. When when we hear residents, especially those who are on fixed incomes, that are worried about tax increases. The only way that we really alleviate that long term is by improving, uh. With an entity right there that then will generate some property tax or generate some sales tax for.
Right.
The city, so just through that lens, whatever. That language looks like in this plan, I I I would. Welcome that.
Yeah, and that's, that's something that we can. Put in here as kind of a visionary, what what do we want this area to become? We'd really get into the weeds and the details when someone has a proposal and comes in for a rezone. You would all look at it again and say, okay, well, does this align with our vision for the general plan? If it's way off the mark, say, well, no, like, we don't recommend approval, cause. It doesn't have anything to do with what we've already talked about, um, and the same with council. Where this plan would give them teeth to support or deny any type of a policy change, um. So, yes, I encourage you to to review that, um. So as far as the the goals for this chapter, and I know we're short on time, we've only got a few minutes. Do we have other stuff we need to talk about?
We can go over the two other text amendments in the business section. I mean, we can just walk, we can do all that.
Um. So again, I encourage you to to read the each goal and strategy in the land use section to make sure again that it captures what we're intending to capture here. Um, this chapter really is the one the planning commission uses the most. Anytime we have a general plan amendment. That's to this document, um. So. Make sure you go through and add comments on. Things that you agree or disagree with. And then the same with the modern income housing. This one was adopted recently, um, the state requires that we adopt this or update it regularly, so. There's nothing really different in this chapter other than they've reformatted it to fit this new template style. So. There's not really a whole lot in here that we need to review. Um. And we'll revisit that chapter every couple of years as we update it. And then chapter four, transportation. So this is the one chapter where there is a little bit of legislative teeth, uh, in that the city. Can't. Build new streets or roads or require developers to build new streets or roads unless it's. Um. Illustrated in our general plan, um, document, so. In here, there's a map, so this map. Shows corridors and here it should show new connections. Uh, let's see. Yeah, so this map will show different areas of the city that we want to connect with different infrastructure, so. This is really helpful because again, as staff, if someone's proposing a development project or subdivision. We can tell them, hey, there's a link here, have slated in our general plan. Like you to pay for it, cause you're building this project right there, um, so this is an important one.
We've thus far not done that to my knowledge, just the city. So that's another one where especially. Um. Coming from Taylor still in Hermon, like we've just. That that would be wonderful and just and whatever that looks like, whether it's commercial or. Higher density, high housing of some kind, just contributing, we. The the closest we got was a a couple of pieces of the Fort Union Master Plan where we took three R ones. And we combined them to twenty units and they improved the sidewalk. Somewhere in the ballpark of what the Fort Union Master Plan set, so it was a slightly better sidewalk. That's about as much as we could get out of it.
Yeah.
So if there's, if there are ways to kind of amplify it a little bit, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, and this this document can also. Kind of punt to have more specific initiatives. So here it can say, one of the goals is to have. A complete design guide that would have cross sections for all the street classifications that we have with specific sidewalk widths. Landscape, arc strip, features, you know, we could do that as a separate planning effort to implement this this vision, so. Um, as you review, keep keep that in mind. So here is a street design manual, so that's something that's in here already, um. So that we have specific criteria that will help brand uh the city and have an identity.
That one of those contradictions, Jim, is the the Fort Union Master Plan and Form Based Code. Form Based Code is probably more current in terms of where our brains are at, in terms of what that looks like in kind of the more ideal circumstance. But from a housekeeping, and that's, that should be the, I haven't done the deep, deep dive on that one, but that should be the the contractor, I feel like. To make sure that that spared it out that, okay, for this section of this part of the city. Is it this wide or is it this wide? Is it with trees or without trees? How close is the traffic? What are the bike lanes look like?
Yeah, that's what the a more focused small area plan would focus on are the dimensions and the actual design, certain corridors, um. Just wanna work. I encourage you to go on here and add as many comments as you want, cause it's really important we capture this stuff now rather than later, cause now's the time to. Find it, so.
Great.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Okay. I'm move over to.
I make a motion when you turn.
Got a motion to your in a second. Mister Smith, motion, then Commissioner Simon.